On our YouTube channel. Links to that can be found on our website. WWW DOT LWV dash WBLA dot org. In addition, local cable channels will replay this forum on a schedule determined by their station. My name is Liz Nardling and I will be moderating this forum tonight. I do not live in White Bear Lake. As a trusted volunteer organization, the League of Women Voters does not support or oppose political parties or candidates. We sponsor forums like this to provide voters an opportunity to hear candidates' views about issues of interest in the upcoming election. The order for speaking tonight will be in alphabetical order by ward and will be rotated thereafter. Candidates' remarks are being timed to assure equality of time. And questions have been submitted by the public on our LWV email. The candidates who are with us tonight are in Ward Four Kevin Edberg and two candidates for Ward Two Doug Bean and Heidi Hughes. We will begin with opening statements and we'll start with Kevin Edberg.
I'd like to begin by thanking the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to participate in this forum and for the longstanding work that the League has done in our communities for promoting fair and open elections. I also thank everyone who's watching and participating in this election. I have been honored to earn the trust of the citizens of this community for over thirty-one years. Nineteen years on the White Bear Lake School Board and now coming up on twelve years on the White Bear Lake City Council representing Ward Four. It's been my honor and privilege to serve in that position of public trust. I look forward to the opportunity to do so for another four years. There are four things that I would highlight in hallmarks of the work that I hope to be able to do in the coming years. Number one is to maintain a high quality of the services that we offer in our community. Over seventy-six percent of our budget currently is spent on things like public safety and public works. The remaining portions cover all the other services that we have. I seek to maintain that we have the appropriate levels of those services to continue to serve our community. Second thing is to continue to bring a spirit of frugality, not cheap, not chintzy, but make sure that we are spending money on the things that provide payoff, to provide value, that maintain service. Having said that, a major challenge for us is going to be maintaining our level of infrastructure investment. We have eighty-one miles of streets in this community and a hundred and eighty miles of sewer lines. Lot of stuff that we don't see, but we have to take care of. Finally, I would mention that I hope to continue a spirit of civility in public service. That when we disagree, we'd agree to disagree amicably. And I look forward to that service. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from our candidates for Ward Two and we will begin with Doug Bean.
I also would like to thank the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to participate in this candidate forum. I have been a council member for Ward Two for twelve years. It has been my honor and privilege to serve the citizens of White Bear Lake. In addition to that, I have a twenty-eight-year law enforcement experience retiring at a command level with the Ramsey County Sheriff's Office. I did three years of water patrol on water on White Bear Lake. So I'm familiar with those issues, even though that was several decades ago. And I made, my wife and I are foster parents to twenty-plus foster children throughout our the last fifteen years or so and the, we have adopted our youngest child out of the foster system. So we have a big presence in the community on multiple different levels. And thank you.
Thank you. Now with your opening statement is Heidi Hughes.
Thank you. I want to pile on the thank yous for the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to come and talk about the issues and about what I find important, what other people find important. We moved here because we love this town. We love White Bear. I love White Bear. And the walkability, the downtown, the natural resources and the things that people have enjoyed here for over a century, which is some of the things that make White Bear so unique. We aren't a first-string suburb of St. Paul. We're on our own special community. And one of the reasons I'm running is because I want to continue to, for the city to have that quaint charm that it has had for so long. And I feel like instead of holding on to that, we are running into things like the rush line, the urbanization of the city, of our housing, of our downtown. And we're moving far away from where we had started. I think that there is going to be some growth that becomes naturally to any kind of city. And I would just like to be a part of the protection of what we have gained here instead. We're a unique area and people move here for that. And so I want to make sure we do that. I also want to hold the line on spending. Our property tax rate and our living and our bonds have continued to increase over the last few years and we're not holding that line. And finally, I would like to make sure, as Kevin said, that we continue the civility, but also to listen to constituents. I think some people don't feel heard or listened to right now and I want to make sure people do.
Thank you. We'll go to our first question and it goes to Doug Bean first. The city of White Bear Lake has a task force to guide the city's welcoming and inclusive community initiative. What would you look for in the task force report? And how would you consider addressing recommendations that may come from the report? Unmute yourself, Doug.
The welcoming community task force has been established while during my tenure on the council. It is made up of community members of various demographics. And I will be looking for the task force to give us a credible response to what they find. And I will be analyzing that. I'm not going to automatically reject it because they're different from me. I'm going to analyze that and take it seriously and do what I can to help with the welcoming community that we have in White Bear Lake. And I'm going to understand that there are issues and problems that some people of different demographics experience. And we need to acknowledge that and we need to acknowledge it honestly and openly and with care. Thank you.
Thank you. The question now goes to Kevin Edberg.
Thank you. I am not a member of the task force. I am, in the light of the last year, we experienced and in America in general, certainly in White Bear Lake, a lot of learning about how our communities function, how they have not been functioning, how some folks are heard and others are not. I'm looking forward to reading the report. I won't prejudge its contents. I am looking forward to seeing how the provision of public services is made in as fair and impartial a manner as possible, that all are afforded equity and equality in their treatment by public servants, including our police force and others, access to all of our services. I'm looking to do a lot of listening. And so at this point, I will not further prejudge what that report might be, but I am looking forward to it with great anticipation.
Thank you. The question now goes to Heidi Hughes.
I would, I guess, triple that by saying I don't want to step in front of what this group has to say. I think they're doing something noble and I applaud the city for actually putting it together. I want to have an open mind before I read anything or see what they have to say. But we are, my family is new to the city. We've been here for over a decade, but we aren't long-term members of the community and we felt very welcomed. So I know that they, I think some challenges by, made by COVID over the last couple of years have also really hurt the situation. People haven't been able to get out and about and spend time with their neighbors. And I really think interpersonal connections and getting to know people on a face-to-face basis makes the biggest difference to anybody feeling welcome anywhere they go for the very first time. And so anything we can do that the city can facilitate, but also just as citizens and community members to get out and about and, and see, see each other as, as other equal human beings. And to be friendly again, I think that hopefully that'll come post-COVID.
Thank you. The next question that goes to you first, Heidi. What ideas do you personally have to make White Bear Lake more welcoming and inviting to people of color?
My personal ideas, I don't have very many in terms of a long spreadsheet. I think that, I think that it's important to recognize that, that many people come from all sorts of different backgrounds and that it's not the color involved necessarily that determines how welcome someone might feel. I feel like in many instances, not only is it your color, but it's also your economic background. It's your adjudicational background. All of these things can make people feel different. And I think instead it's up to us as community members to realize we're all human beings, that we are all born equally and to treat each other that way. I think having things like Market Fest, Winter Fest, where we have our community gatherings. I think the school board's got its work cut out for it. And, and I look forward to talking with school board members who are going to work through those situations. But as a city, I think one of the things we just need to do is make sure that we're, that the, that the police who are doing a phenomenal job are allowed to continue that and that we continue to see people face-to-face.
Thank you. The question now goes to Doug Bean.
Thank you. The task force is a prime example of what we need to do to figure out what we need to do to be more welcoming to persons of color. But on another note, my adopted daughter is a child of color. And so I am growing up with that knowledge and then growing up with her, with her thoughts and her ideas and, and what, what her fears and concerns are. So I'm in a position with my council position to actually relay those, those messages to people of, that have the power to make differences such as our, our, our school, elected officials, our, our school superintendent. And I have the, the knowledge and ability to, to do what's right for my, my daughter and other persons of color and to make White Bear Lake the welcoming community that we all want it to be.
Thank you. The question now goes to Kevin Edberg.
There are two things that I would particularly reflect on. First is that in the provision of public service, this is the one place where the city council does have influence. And it has to do with reflection on staff training and efforts to make sure that we, that our systems are as free of bias as possible, that we encourage among all of our staff, the, the self-reflection that comes from seeing and hearing and knowing things today that might be different than what we grew up learning. I personally, my personal journey over the past year has exposed me to a number of times and places where I have become aware of some unspoken, perhaps not intentionally learned perspectives that I hold. And it's caused me to rethink some things about how I lead my life. And I think we should all do that and encourage that for our staff and others. I think the second thing is our community is rich in public engagement and we have rich social capital among our organizations and to leverage that and all of their capacities to make our services and make our life rich and welcoming in our community.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional comments? And we'll move on to the next question and it goes to Doug Bean first. The city of White Bear Lake formed a housing task force to create a set of recommendations for housing policies, development priorities and housing-related programs for the council to consider. What are your thoughts about the preliminary findings and recommendations of the housing task force? Do you favor a range of housing options? And what are your priorities and what financing options would you recommend pursuing? A multi-purpose question there.
Very good. The housing task force was formed over the last couple of years. And it is expected to give us information that we need everything. We need properties that our children can afford to move into and raise, start raising their families. We need, we need properties that our senior citizens can move into when they want to stay in our community and continue to live the, the White Bear Lake life. But the, the property, the properties are, the housing task force is going to help us figure out exactly what we need and how we can, how we can achieve those goals.
Thank you. Question now goes to Heidi Hughes.
Thank you. I guess this kind of continues that trend of the urbanization of the area. I don't feel like we are by nature a suburb of St. Paul. I think that this is a community of single-family homes. And, you know, we're, we're pretty built out, so those are turning over and the, the economy is driving a lot of that. And I think that that, that's right. I think that this is, this is the way, this is the way people want to live and this is why people are, are turning to White Bear and, and staying here. That said, I think there are lots of opportunities for creative solutions. We have a mother-in-law apartment above our garage that, that my dad's currently in, not my mother-in-law. My sister-in-law has done the same. I think there are a lot of opportunities for people to try to retire in age and place. And we also have a number of other senior living areas. But as far as taking down areas that we already have and, and jamming them with, with urban dwellings, with density housing, I, I don't think that that's the right way to go.
Thank you. The question goes to Kevin Edberg.
So we have a tension between what the market wants to give us and what our community wants. We have property owners who have certain desires for the use of their property and the opportunity to maximize their income. And we have the impacts that are shared socially. And I'm not aware that we are taking down private properties and, and urbanizing. I do sense that we have the marketplace that has capital that wants to give us options that we aren't necessarily preferring. Seems to me the city has at least three options. Number one is to be much more intentional about how we address the borderline areas between commercial and residential and how we zone those transition areas to promote a, to maintain that neighborhood feel that we, that we value. I think the second thing is that when developers approach us, that we look for providing support, primarily in form of financial support like TIF, only in those cases where we get something more value-added, whether that's affordability or some other attributes that are useful to us. And the, the last item is we support a range of options for supporting all parts of our community.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional comments? Yes, Heidi.
Yes, thank you. I think a lot of these things, as far as Kevin was talking about with zoning and those kinds of changes are, are discussed, are planned for a lot in the, in the 2040 plan. Where they have sections, we have sections laid out already where they would be appropriate for more dense housing, townhomes to apartments. And those are laid out in a way that makes sense in terms of their proximity to single-family homes. So I think it's when we have a developer come along and we take the big red shiny apple and don't think about the ramifications of that and the fact that it's maybe not on the 2040 plan that we run into changes that, that probably don't, that, that maybe don't fit the desires of the community or frankly of the city because it's not already in that plan.
Thank you. Any other, anyone else with additional comments? Yes, Doug.
So I would just like to comment that we have not had any big red shiny apples to come up and convert single-family property to multi-family property, whatever. We do have zoning that takes care of the transitions. We have the forty-year plan. And it's, it's well thought out and it's, it's thought out by the, the professionals on our staff and analyzed by our council. And it's been very methodical and it's gone very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments, Kevin?
Yes.
Yeah, I will simply add that I think there are some additional improvements that we could make in our zoning, zoning practices. Improvements like expanding the range of notice that must be provided to the communities when items are coming up for community discussion to encourage more and wider, broader participation. Greater refinements to the processes by which those community hearings are held and to promote greater understanding of the development process. So I think there are tweaks that are available inside of our existing process. I'm looking forward to seeing perhaps some of those coming out of the, of the task force. But at, at its core, there are these tensions that don't go away. And White Bear Lake is mostly built out, but we do have a dozen or so locations around the city in various parts that might be appropriate for housing, might be appropriate for other uses than what they are currently used. Many of them are called out in the current plan. But being thoughtful and methodical about considering those uses is where that decision needs to be, where particular attention needs to be paid.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question and it goes to Kevin Edberg first. Since 2019, the city of White Bear Lake has been involved in the Climate Smart Municipalities Program, which pairs cities in Minnesota with a German city to bring about progress toward a cleaner and more efficient energy footprint. White Bear Lake established a steering committee to develop goals and strategies for community efforts in the areas of energy conservation, renewable energy, transportation, waste reduction, water supply and natural resources. What are your thoughts about this work and how would you, as a newly elected official, support progress toward a more energy-efficient footprint in White Bear Lake? It goes to Kevin first.
Thank you. I have been a part of the, of the Climate Smart program. I think it's been a very fine investment from the part of the German government and the University of Minnesota have been the primary funders of that work. I've had an opportunity to see new technologies that I think are workable and accessible to us. I have been pleased to bring that back to our council for consideration. Things like variable lighting on public facilities. I think the opportunities also exist for retrofitting and incorporation of increasing levels of renewable energy in our current lighting of, lighting and electrical use, energy use of our public buildings. We just, COVID put a big dent on the progress of that work over the last two years. We just last week had a report on that and looking to how we might be more intentional about incorporating intentionally more renewable energy, such as at the sports center, at City Hall and other places so that we decarbonize our electrical system, our, our electrical systems and energy systems in general.
Thank you. Question now goes to Heidi Hughes.
Yeah, thank you. I think that this is another area, or this is an area where similar to the program that, that the city is also involved in, that looking at what other cities have done, their best practices is the kind of thing where we can further get other ideas that have worked in other municipalities and also find out the cost-benefit analysis of some of those things. These all cost money and those are all the kind of things that hit, hit all of us as taxpayers. I think they're great ideas, but there's a natural tension there between, between some of these savings and the cost that it's actually gonna, gonna take to pay for. And I would just point out, you know, we just did this water meter project here in the city. And there was a federal grant available for, for that. And rather than actually going after that federal, federal grant to have it paid for, our city took out a loan instead. And these are the kinds of things I, I, I think are, are short-sighted. We're going to have a lot of spending costs in the future and we should probably be looking at ways to, to fund those that don't include just taxing everyone.
Thank you. The question goes to Doug Bean, please.
I also have been a member of the Climate Smart Communities Group. The, the opportunity to pick up information from others. And not only are we getting information from our, our partners in Ludenscheid, Westphalen Rusperliya, Germany, but our partners at the University of Minnesota and our partners in Duluth and Rochester and Warren, other cities that are involved. The state of Minnesota is involved. This last event that we participated in, learned about grant opportunities and some things that we need to start putting together sooner rather than later. And the, the other thing with the Climate Smart Municipalities is it's giving, given me much knowledge that I can use to help evaluate proposals that are put together, put forth by our city staff. And our city staff is very forward-thinking when it comes to doing things the right way to save as much energy for, for our city buildings as possible. And it's been a very valuable project.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional comments? Yes, Kevin.
I would just like to assure Heidi that the city council and staff are incredibly focused on creating taxpayer value. The proposal that was brought to us from Train, one of our local businesses who is in this, who does extensive work in this, clearly focused on suggestions for projects with paybacks in less than ten years. In other words, focusing on that opportunities to obtain a significant and substantial return on taxpayer investment. And that's a part of our ethos.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then we'll move on to the next question and it goes to Heidi first. The appeals in the lake-level lawsuit have largely been turned down. How do you see White Bear addressing the court orders that include, well, do them one at a time, the requirement to develop a plan to shift from groundwater to surface water source, surface water as the source of the city's water supply?
In parts. So we moved here just when the water level was really far down. And I remember talking to another, a number of my neighbors about, about, about what this means and following the lawsuit and following what the GSA study said and, and why the lake level was down. And I understand now we've got to move from, we've got to change our water source. And I guess I would turn this back into another financial conversation. There are other cities that are going through this exact same thing. There, for various reasons, people are trying to figure out how to conserve water and to find new sources of water that, that don't, that don't hurt the environment. And we aren't the only ones. So best practices, again, in other cities is somewhere we should focus. But there's a cost to all of this. And I think that with the, with the budget going as it is, that these are the kinds of things that we need to be thinking of in terms of what the cost is to the taxpayer as well. I also note, just in a short way, that we've got some COVID dollars that are coming in from the federal government. And rather than focus on maybe how we could save those dollars in terms of paying for these, paying for these future developments, we're just going for new spending. And I think that that's fiscally irresponsible.
Thank you. The question goes to Kevin Edberg.
So I'll dispute Heidi's assertion about new spending versus the use of COVID dollars. We're looking at how we use those dollars strategically to reduce and offset future obligations as the primary focus of that. The, with regard to the water use, I personally disagree with the court's decision, the local, the district court's decision, their reading of science, misreading of science. At this point, we do need to plan. But I believe we should be perceiving, pursuing options that, fine, we can plan, doesn't mean we have to implement at this point in time. And I think the focus, the reason we have, we instigated the lawsuit and tried to defend against it was to avoid unnecessary expenditure for relatively little environmental gain. So I think we will have to deal with that as it's, as it's brought forth. But I think we can plan without necessarily having to set aside the hundreds of millions to implement.
Thank you. The question now goes to Doug Bean.
The court order is currently on hold and it's still going through the process. I also disagree with the court order, but it is on hold. However, if it is eventually upheld, it will be a regional issue. It won't be a White Bear Lake issue. White Bear Lake will be involved and we'll have to make sure we're involved smart. We can't ignore it. But it will be a regional issue. And my participation on the Ramsey County Legal Local Governments gives me also the contacts with many of our neighboring cities who will also be affected by this. And the Department of Natural Resources will, you know, is the primary recipient of the lawsuit. So it's, it's going to be a state of Minnesota thing and it will not be given directly to the state, to the city of White Bear Lake to deal with financially. And regardless, the, the COVID funds are minuscule compared to what the cost of this conversion to surface water, if it were to become necessary, would be.
Thank you. Any additional comments from anyone? And we'll move on to part two of the question. And it will first go to Doug Bean. What are your thoughts addressing the court orders, including the water conservation measures that would bring residential consumption to the required seventy-five gallons a day or ninety gallons a day overall?
The city of White Bear Lake under a prior city council has already reduced our water consumption under that level. So it's not an issue.
Thank you. Question goes to Kevin Edberg.
Yeah, our city and its residents have already made tremendous strides in reducing those levels of utilization to the point where that's not my primary concern at the moment. Nonetheless, I think it makes sense for us to always be looking for best practices for individual initiatives that find ways, ways of conserving water. That's never a bad thing and we should continue to focus on incorporating into all of our public and private activities ways that might reduce our use of, of groundwater.
Thank you. Question goes to Heidi Hughes.
Yeah, I would just finish by saying the, my, my kids have bring home every year the, the environmental-friendly box that they get from XL Energy and from other areas where we go around the house and make sure we've got, you know, the most energy-efficient light bulb and the low-flow shower head and, and the, you know, we check out our toilet, make sure there isn't any leak. and the, you know, we check out our toilet, make sure there isn't any leaking. And I think these are the kinds of community activities that that should continue in order to make sure that that those numbers do stay down and they can be fun as well.
Thank you. Anyone have any additional comments? And we'll move on to the next question. It goes to Heidi Hughes first. Minneapolis and Duluth have both passed a bring your own bag ordinance that will go into effect this month. Hundreds of other municipalities across the country have passed similar ordinances which have effectively effectively reduced the amount of plastic waste in the environment. Would you support a similar effort in White Bear Lake?
I would, I would, I would support a community effort. I would not support one that was that was government mandated. No. I think that there are reasons to carry things in bags. However, I mean, I use recyclable, I use reusable bags frequently. There are times though when I don't, when I'm running to the store at an off time and I haven't had time to stash something in my car. And that's just a daily use of life. I I am probably not going to be able to have a reusable bag in my car or in my purse constantly. And so to be able to sort of take that away is would would be a hardship to the average person. But I do think that a community engagement program by by continuing to sell, I know Kowalski's and Lunds and many other stores sell reusable bags. I have some from all other, all other areas. And frankly, they're much, they're much more user friendly. They don't rip and they're huge and I can take them to Costco and lower myself up. I think that those are great ideas as long as they're led by individuals and not by the government.
Thank you. The question goes to Doug Bean.
So on a citywide basis, no, I wouldn't support it. I support this more on a regional or statewide basis. But I believe that individual mandates, you know, when a city makes an individual, individual mandate like that, it puts our businesses at a disadvantage. So regionally or statewide, I don't have a problem with it.
Thank you. Question goes to Kevin Edberg.
Similar to Doug, I also would not support unilateral citywide action. I do think it's a rich opportunity for community discussion. However, and there's a range of alternatives that we can use. I personally abhor that these doggone plastic bags that are almost forced upon me. And the folks at Quick Trip will will tell you that I carry my bananas and ice cream out right in my hands and not in bags. Having said that, the amount of plastic waste that finds its way into the community is atrocious. We need to find some other way of engaging citizens to change behavior. Now, whether that's a bag ban, whether it's a per bag charge, whether it is something else that might be workable ways of raising this, I think it starts with community discussion. I think we have enough folks who love our community that we could be able to sustain that conversation as a starter and make a cultural change in how we make use of make use of plastic and have it stick around in our in our community where it doesn't belong.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional comments? And we'll move on to the next question. It goes to Kevin Edberg first. What is your stance on the rush line proposal? If you are against it, how will you work to ensure residents who cannot drive and need better public transportation options are able to travel to where they need to go? If you are for it, what will you do to promote the positive reasons better public transportation improves the city and the lives of everyone?
So the first thing I would mention is that the decision makers on this issue are not the White Bear Lake City Council. By law, the decision makers for this are found at the Met Council and folks who want to change decisions need to be focusing there. Having said that, I do support the rush line. What most folks don't talk about is that there's going to be another million people added to the population, the metro metropolitan area in the next 20 to 30 years. Not all of them are coming to White Bear Lake, but we need an integrated system that moves people from work to play to all kinds and other parts of our community and transportation renovation needs to be a part of that conversation. I support it because if in the entire Northeast Metro from west, excuse me, east of 35W, north of 94, there is not a single other major transportation system in plan. We will be the only part of the metropolitan area without one. I think we have talked to our city police chief. She says that there are no issues with police that, excuse me, with policing that cannot be handled. And I don't see a congestion formed by 140 buses, bus trips on a road that handles 40,000 a day. So I'm supportive.
Thank you. The question now goes to Heidi Hughes.
I'm opposed. I'm a hard no on the rush line. And while I agree that some of the decision makers are at Met Council and the county, I disagree that the council that the city council has no role to play here. There is a vote coming up that the city council is going to take in November. That's just going to be a yes or no, we support or we don't support. And I think it would be telling to have a support, to have a vote where the members of the city council voted no. I also think, you know, the federal government is swayed by when a city that comes up says no to it, that they might pay attention to not giving away $250 million for this project. I note that the other $250 million will come from all of us, from the taxpayers will be paying for that for what maybe empty buses. And then this post-COVID environment where people are working from home, I think that there just needs to be, we just need to go back to the drawing board. I think that the best way to route people into downtown St. Paul and into Minneapolis is to get them in the park and ride, either at Vatness Heights or Maplewood. I think having the slow boat from from White Bear Lake to St. Paul isn't going to be useful route.
Thank you. Question goes to Doug Bean.
So as we all know, I'm a pre-election this year. I've been doing a lot of door to door knocking. Most of the people I have to bring up the subject of the rush line. Most of the people don't care about it. There's a, there's a vocal few that oppose it and there's a silent few that that support it. The rush line is called the rush line, not because it's fat, but because fast, but because eventual terminus is Rush City, Minnesota. The rush line is one of 18 bus rail, bus like rail or bus rapid transit or light rail systems that the Metropolitan Council is putting together for for our metropolitan area. The the rush line is being turned over to the Metropolitan Council by these, by the county board tomorrow. And so it is, it's not our decision. It's we can influence it, we cannot control it. And we influence it. One way we're influencing it is by Washington Street will be converted to a one way so that the Metropolitan Council will not have to take over any of the property neighboring where the rush line is going to be running there.
Thank you. Any additional comments? And we'll move on to the next question. It goes to Heidi Hughes first. White Bear Lake has the lowest per capita property tax rate among 11 comparable cities in the metro area. The city is facing the loss of local government aid along with potential changes to fiscal disparities funding from the state. It is also facing funding issues for capital replacement along with looming wage increases that face every employer right now. What is your plan to grow the tax base and raise revenues so that White Bear Lake can not only maintain the services that they provide, take care of the infrastructure, infrastructure it already has and be ready to take on future challenges?
I guess I'd say a little bit of that is backwards thinking. I mean, I, we, I'm, I'm the family budget runner in our house and we have the amount of money that comes in. And then you rate your priorities based on that. You don't just go out and get more money simply because you want to spend more money. And money is, money is finite. I mean, this is a zero sum game. There's only so much out there. And so the attitude of we want to be able to spend more, so therefore we're going to tax more, I think is I think is wrong. I think it's not responsible. And and that's not where where I would sit. I did know there is some COVID funds coming in from the federal government. I hope that those are wisely, those are wisely allocated amongst some priorities that have already been laid out. And I think that those are the kinds of decisions that these are the tough, tough kind of decisions that the cities all over the world are having to make. What gets spent on and what doesn't? I also know one of the reasons that that we have a lower tax burden is because Ramsey County is our library. There are a lot of cities that are paying for that out of their own pocket and that's cost millions of dollars. And there are there are things that the counties, that the county is covering for us that we're not having to pay for. But again, I would say I think that that's coming at the argument backwards, that we need to look at how much money we have and then set the priorities based on that.
Thank you. Question goes to Doug Bean.
White Bear Lake, we are the second lowest, if you include our local government aid of comparable cities statewide. We are the lowest of the per capita tax rate. We have been increasing as other cities have been increasing taxes based on, you know, prices go up, our budgets, our personal budgets all go up every year. So it's, it's going to go up. So now as far as increase in the tax base, we have to make sure that we keep up with our infrastructure and we keep up with with our public safety and all the other activities. So that way we continue to have people coming to White Bear Lake that we have, continue having people purchasing our properties. We continue to do what is necessary. And regarding the library, the library is on the, is on the the property taxes, a separate issue. And we do pay for that. It's a small, our biggest expense is public safety.
Thank you. The question goes to Kevin Edberg.
Yeah, I'm afraid I have a very different view from from Heidi. So the issues that we face is that we have been, this council has been incredibly frugal as were our predecessors. We have given an inheritance that has been, that has allowed us to maintain a high quality and standard service at relatively low funds. One of the reasons for doing that was that we were very fortunate at having interest earnings in the 1980s, 90s, early 2000s. Those interest earnings have gone away. The real true cost of those, of those services are what we're dealing with right now. We have streets that, we have four miles of streets that have not yet been reconstructed. That's an expensive proposition. We have 70 miles of streets that are due for mill and overlay. Those are expenses that simply need to be taken on with because we will lose the access to the services that and the infrastructure that we already have. So looking at property tax increases augmented at whenever possible by grants and other forms of funding, yes. But we've been subsidized by other things and it's time we need to take a look at how do we do that judiciously?
Thank you. Any additional comments, anyone? Here I see none. Next question goes to Kevin Edberg first. What do you see as the city's role in revitalizing White Bear Lake businesses post pandemic? And what other organizations would play a role? How would you support businesses and the historic downtown?
So the first thing that I think about is that our business is not simply downtown. It includes downtown, but we have significant business interests in my ward along County Road E, in Berkeley Road and other business sectors in the community. So to equate business with just the downtown, I don't think is is doing justice to the entire business community in the in White Bear Lake. I've been a strong proponent of making use of COVID dollars to help sustain and move our support businesses through the past two years, to the extent that those opportunities continue to exist, be happy to do that. Fundamentally, the community, the businesses are private businesses. They will need to do the investments they make, retain the employees, pay the wages that they need to pay to retain the talent that they require for their services. And that's not a government function. I do think that there is an opportunity for us to continue things like Market Fest and other things that bring people to our community, totally in support of that.
Thank you. Question goes to Doug Bean.
So White Bear Lake, because of COVID, we relaxed enforcement of parking and sidewalk ordinances to help our businesses operate during the COVID times. We have also converted distributed COVID relief funds to our businesses. We eliminated liquor licenses for the, for the restaurants for the year 2000 and the you know, so and the, the city supports the downtown. We know what we are willing to work with, with the downtown businesses. And I speak of downtown because downtown is my ward. I also understand that we have other businesses in the city and and they also deserve our support and the the role that the city can play is to be involved, to be aware, to be knowledgeable and to make accommodations when possible.
Thank you. The question now goes to Heidi Hughes.
Yeah, we enjoyed sitting outside during the summer of COVID and having her to go, having her to go meals. In fact, my husband and I have continued that. It's been, it's been a lot of fun to just go uptown, grab his meal and then bring it back home. And it's actually been, it's been our Friday night jam. And I think that the city encouraging people to continue to be downtown, be downtown and to to be in our retail and restaurants is is an important role, I think partnering with the Downtown Association and Market Fest, Winter Fest, all of these, the Thursday night shopping evenings. Those are all important things to do to continue to bring people down here. And I guess I would also say, since Ward 2 is where I'm looking. There, I know there are other areas of the city, but I think when people think White Bear, they think downtown and they think in that shopping area. And so I, I applaud the city for continuing to, for for finding unique ways of allowing those restaurants to continue to feed people like me who don't want to cook on a Friday night.
Thank you. Any additional comments from anyone? And we'll move on to the next question and it goes to Doug Bean first. Do you see a way to address parking in downtown White Bear Lake?
The city of White Bear Lake provides the vast majority of the parking for downtown right now. There is, and we do this at no cost to the customers or to the, or to the, the business owners. However, I do need to evaluate any proposals that are put out by the downtown businesses and see if there's things that they they're, they're down there all the time. They can give us ideas. They can give us plans that we can evaluate and see if we can work out. But but right now the city is doing a great deal by providing the vast majority of all the parking.
Thank you. The question now goes to Heidi Hughes.
You know, I've heard the same complaint that there isn't enough parking for people to come in. And I have to admit, I'll come in for a hair appointment at noon on a, on a Tuesday or a Saturday and it'll be tough to find parking. Sometimes I'm parking in the street. There are some, there is a lot of parking in the neighborhood and you're having to walk a few more blocks. But I do know that a lot of people don't want to do that when they come downtown. There is some parking there, but that that those considerations have to be weighed hand in hand. I think that as, as park, as, as businesses maybe are revitalized and remodeled, maybe there would be some opportunities to increase parking spots, but those, that's going to be a tension on the people that are there. And and trying to to gain a few more spaces.
Thank you. The question goes to Kevin Edberg.
Yeah, thank you. So clearly attention, and I don't know that there is, there are no easy solutions to the issue. There are some ways of nibbling at the edges, identifying some marginal areas on the edges that and encouraging employees to park in different places, perhaps providing transportation from those outlets to to downtown for employee parking, et cetera, to free up some additional spots. But there's no easy answer. The solution that has been proposed a number of times has been that we should build a parking ramp downtown. That's not one that I, that strikes me as being consistent with the ethos and the, and the atmosphere of the downtown area, but I'm open to listening to that. If that happens, I think that that should be a cost born not just by the city, that that's a significant business owner participation would be an absolute requirement for that. That conversation has never progressed to the point of being able to have that. So I don't know that any of us have a solution. I'm open to suggestions and solutions and conversation, but everybody who benefits needs to pay.
Thank you. Any additional comments from anyone? We'll move on to the next question. It goes to Doug again first. What kinds of partnerships should the city have with the White Bear Lake School District, particularly with their increased footprint in the downtown area?
The the city has to be in communication with the school district, but the school district is a different entity of all of its own. The as the, the school districts building project in the area that's adjacent to downtown is, is moving forward. The planning that needs to be done is in the process, but it's a matter of our staff working with their staff and us working with the, with the elected school board officials to see how we meet the needs and the opportunities that come and and move forward. But we need, we need ideas and we need information.
Thank you. Question goes to Kevin Edberg.
So the city of White Bear Lake is one of 13 municipalities that provide, whose children attend the White Bear Lake Public Schools. So while we are very closely identified with it, the interests of the district are far broader than only our district. Certainly they're inclusive of us. And as you know, we have a very prominent downtown focus on that. One of the things that I have promoted for several years, we've actually done it, we did it once pre-COVID, was proposing an annual was proposing an annual meeting of the city leaders from the municipalities inside the school district to meet with school district officials in a formal way to identify an agenda that creates the forum for us to have these kinds of conversations that permit us to have the opportunity to solve problems collectively instead of one-on-one. Specifically in the city, yes, we have some specific traffic issues that we're going to have to manage. I believe they can be addressed skillfully. We have the challenge, there are the ways of doing with that, but we're going to have to work our way into that as the construct, construction and operations plans move forward.
Thank you. Question now goes to Heidi Hughes.
I think the, I think Kevin hit the nail on the head there. The transportation issue is going to be huge as they move all the kids from south up to north. And the, the drivers that are able to park, they don't have parking for all the, all the kids. And so then many of them are going to be on the school buses that are going to have to go across the railroad tracks. And as anybody knows, the law states that a bus that goes over the railroad track has to stop, open up its door, close up its door, and then continue to cross. And that's going to back up traffic on sixty-one all the way down. There is a report that the, that the school board was required to get, to look at how that traffic was going to lay out. And all they said was that left turn needs to take place before Seventh. They didn't say how all of those buses were going to get across sixty-one. So that's a big deal. And, and I think the city needs to be a part of the conversations because people are going to be complaining about that. And frankly, I am a little shocked in some ways by how much the city and the school board haven't been talking as this project had, had started, when the school bond came out and, and to where we are now.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional comments? Then we'll move on to the next question. It goes to Heidi Hughes first. What is your plan to help tackle the growing partisanship and overwhelming discourse that seems to grow louder and louder within the city? For example, school board meetings that require police presence, online social media bullying, and private social media groups spreading misinformation?
Well, personally, I try to stay off next door and the Facebook groups as much as possible and to not comment. I am aware of conversations that go on, but I'm trying to stay out of that and, and form my own, be my own best, be my own best advocate, I guess, I guess there. I guess I would say this, Doug and I disagree on a lot of issues. And I welcome this forum in a way to discuss this, but I tell everybody that I meet, Doug's a good man. I have no problems with Doug as a person. I think what he's done as a foster parent is amazing. I know people who know him and like him, and that's what I do when I go out to campaign. I think that we can all sit down at the table and disagree with things. I mean, we already did, I notably about how we're going to meet budgetary issues. But I don't think that, I don't think anything poorer of him or of anybody that sits on the council because they disagree with me. And I think that some of these conversations start with me. Also, I don't encourage anybody and frankly, I discourage for people from making any kind of personal or slanderous attack against anybody that is running for office. You know, federal, the federal politicians for, for decades have been able to have lunch together. I think it's unfortunate what's happening right now.
Thank you. The question goes to Kevin Edberg.
Thank you. One of the seminal parts of my experience in public office took place in the late nineteen seventies when I became chairman of the White Bear Lake School Board at a time of intense disagreement in the community around a levy at that time and the feeling that tried to take place afterward. We had experienced tremendous incivility. When I took the gavel that night, I gave the opportunity and committed that all people who wanted to speak would have an opportunity to speak, the board would listen, there would be responses. That, but that I would insist on civility in our procedures. The tenor of the community and the tenor of the board meetings changed that night. And I'm proud to say I was an instigator of that. We are in a, in a different time with many more forces. Like Heidi, I try and stay off of social media mostly. The, I can only continue to appeal and try to model a behavior that allows us to disagree without being disagreeable, to be respectful in all of our conversation and to encourage a, a strong sense of following the rule of law.
Thank you. Question goes to Doug Bean.
We lead by example. One of the things that's been very noticeable for me on the city council is that we don't all agree. We, but we do all talk and listen to each other and we have even been known to change each other's minds while we're up there on, on, on the, on the DS. It is just leading by example. Now, as far as what's happening, happening in, in other areas, it's, it's a bigger societal issue that I, I don't have an answer on how to fix the bigger societal issue. But I know leading by example and teaching our children is, is the way that I would move forward. And thank you, Heidi.
Does anyone have any additional comments on that? Then we'll move to the next question. It goes to Kevin Edberg first. In what ways have you been involved in supporting and promoting the city of White Bear Lake?
So that's a, that's a great question. So a part of it is engagement with other, with other cities and city leaders trying to hold up those places where we have done things that are perhaps out of the ordinary or perhaps have been a, somebody who's trial and erroring and giving people an opportunity to see what some of our, our results might have been. So there's an engagement around policy. I haven't been particularly, as I said, I try and stay off of social media. So that whole sense of, of being a cheerleader, though I was one of the individuals who a long time ago participated in the shaping of Market Fest and providing some of the original leadership and thinking around what might that function be? So those are things that I have done, but I haven't been a particularly rah-rah, white bear kind of person on, in, in terms of that personal touch.
Thank you. The question now goes to Doug Bean.
The way, the ways that I've been involved, I am the city's representative on the Rams, kind of legal, league of local governments. In fact, for, for years I was either the president or the vice president of that league. And I was able to bring forth White Bear Lake's, our, our ideas, our plans, our projects and such. And another way is through the climate smart municipalities. I am not only working with other, with other cities in Minnesota, but other cities in Germany. And the, plus are my contacts with the school. I, I have an eleven-year-old that's, that's currently in, in the, in the middle school. We are in contact with, with her, her teachers and the principal and superintendent and talking about school things with, with them. And, and they know, and they know my, my position. And the final thing would be, I did twenty-eight years in law enforcement in Ramsey County. White Bear Lake is in Ramsey County. And much of that I was on, I was on White Bear Lake and I have memories from that that I share and experiences from that that I share and White Bear Lake has always been on top of things.
Thank you. The question goes to Heidi Hughes.
Yeah, we're kind of community do-gooders. We do, you know, we go to the events and we socialize and try to make friends and, and speak the place up. I mean, I'd have to say I don't go into St. Paul and tell people, hey, come on over to White Bear Lake. But we try to build community where we are by going to the annual night out by attending Market Fest. My kids love jumpy things, so we're on those every week. By, by just being a good part of this community, by, by supporting events that are going on, the shortest, the shortest marathon for the, for the food shelf and, and by being actively involved in our community.
Thank you. That was our last question. And so we're going to move to closing statements now. And we'll begin with our two candidates for Ward Two and we'll start with Heidi Hughes.
Well, again, I want to thank you for this opportunity to, to come and talk about the things that, that, about running through city council, I guess. Again, we love living here, we love the, the feel of this place. We love being in White Bear Lake, the natural resources, the community resources, the community feel. And I want to be a part of protecting and preserving that from being able to stay the unique community that we have been for more than a hundred years. We are not a, so, you know, a simple suburb of St. Paul. And I want to be a part of, of, of keeping that. I want to also keep in mind our, our budget. I'm really concerned with what's going to happen financially once we come out of COVID. We've got a lot of bills to pay, not only at the city level, but at the county and federal level. And those are going to impact families. And I think one of the things we can make sure we do here in the city is to keep our spending down as low as possible and, and return back to the, back to the, the low, the low levy days in the past. And, and some of that's going to take some creativity. And again, I am, I'm actively against the rush line. I think that that is going to change the community feel here. Not only is it going to physically destroy a lot of sixty-one and, and, and the, the route way that the buses are going to take, but it's going to be a huge cost for, I don't think, much benefit. And, and I look forward to being part of the solution to, and making transit work for our community.
Did we lose our moderator?
Everything okay?
Thank you. Sorry, my husband has undone our Wi-Fi here. He's walking around with something in the middle. I'm sorry. So Heidi, did you finish your closing statement? Okay. I'm sorry for the interruption. Now with his closing statement is Doug Bean.
Doug, you're muted.
Thank you. You need to start over. You're on mute.
All right then. I would like to again, take a moment to thank the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to participate in this candidate's forum. During my tenure on the city council, White Bear Lake has maintained its infrastructure while being fiscally responsible, keeping our second lowest per capita tax rate for cities of comparable size, coupled with a ninety-four percent positive satisfaction rate of excellent or good in a recent community survey. I'm asking for your vote. Vote for, for me based on decisions and actions that the council can take, not issues the council has no authority over. The next four years will provide significant opportunity regarding maintaining our infrastructure, businesses and workforce, along with opportunities to promote a vibrant, safe and well-managed community for our families and for all of our children and grandchildren to call home and make this their home in the future. Vote for Doug Bean, White Bear Lake City Council, Ward Two. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are our two candidates for Ward Two. Now we will hear our candidate for Ward Four, Kevin Edberg.
Thank you. I too want to thank the League for its work and, and for your sponsorship tonight. I've had the privilege of living in White Bear Lake for fifty-one years, almost my entire adult life. I've had opportunities to live elsewhere. I've never wanted to. This is a community that has given me particular opportunities in life. This community gave me an outstanding education for which I have been eternally grateful. It has given me other opportunities as well. And my, my goal in service and public service has always simply been to try and give back to the community that has given me so much, to try and perpetuate the, the best of what we have. The, whether that be in the areas of opportunity, social amenities, the quality of life that we have all treasured. My dad still lives in the community, the house that we bought in nineteen seventy, that he bought in nineteen seventy. This has been a place that has nurtured people to spend their lives here and they have come to love White Bear Lake. They, they love it, do not want to leave. I think that is an incredible statement of satisfaction, incredible statement of a lot of good things that have happened and that we want to perpetuate. I look forward to spending the next four years continuing in that legacy, trying to address some of the very real challenges that we have, to try and continue to build on our strengths, to try and continue to make this place, a place for our current residents and their children and the grandchildren to come. I thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. The League thanks the candidates for their participation. Our League volunteers and you, the audience, for your attendance and interest. Let your voice be heard by voting by November second. Thank you.